Hello, everyone. This is Mayor Sarah Jefferson, convening a special call meeting for the High Point City Council. Here in the room includes Mayor Proton Holmes, council members Harmon, McKiver, Cook, and Andrew. We do expect that some other members of council will be joining us as we go through the rest of our afternoon. We've got several items that we'll get into, but before we do that, what we'd like to do is have an adoption of our agenda. Someone who would kind of make a motion for that. So move.
Second.
It's been a motion made by Mayor Proton Holmes, the second by council member Cook. A discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And against, that motion passes and we have our agenda. The items that we'll go into, I think there are going to be some really good pieces, but before we do that, I actually think we've got a new team member who we get to welcome into our midst. For that, I'll pass it to Madam Manager to give us an update on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Jefferson. I wanted to just take a moment and introduce our new Economic Development Director. Peter Bishop is with us. This is his first special meeting with our council, and he was going to attend our meeting this evening as well. And you all will have more opportunities to interact with Peter, but he's coming to us from the city of Burlington. He started with us last week, and we are quickly getting him acclimated to a lot of our city projects. I told him he has joined a great group, a great team, so I wanted you all to have the opportunity to put the name and the face together.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Tasha. No, just really excited to be here. So much to learn, so many people to meet, so a lot of work to be done, but hopefully to pick up where others have left off and a lot of the great momentum that the council is working, so thank you.
Absolutely. And the items that we have on our agenda today, we're trying to make sure that we're covering topics that would be of interest as we are gearing up for our retreat. That's going to be held later this week, so we're continuing with our departmental updates, and we'll take those mayor as you see fit.
Awesome. Well, first, I'd like to say, probably on behalf of the whole group, Peter, how excited we are to welcome you and hope that you are getting settled in pretty well, and that the team's showing you where the caffeinated and decaffeinated coffees at. Because they didn't show me that my first week. They just told me everything was decaf. But no, seriously, welcome. We're excited to have you. So team, I think as Madam Manager said, we've got a retreat this week. But probably more importantly than that, as you all know, in about four and a half months, we have to pass the budget. And key pieces to be able to do that is us being able to hear from our various departments in the world that they play in the work of the city. And I'm always excited anytime we get to hear from our Budget Department, because there's nothing else I'd rather do on a Monday afternoon than hear about the Budget Department. But before we do that, we're actually going to hear from our Communications and Public Engagement Department. So we'll pass it to Managing Director Jaron Hollis, then after that, we'll move on through the rest of the agenda. Jaron?
Good afternoon. Jaron Hollis, Managing Director. Glad to see everyone here. Want to go through some information on Communications and Public Engagement. I'll do a high-level view and talk about our divisions and just briefly kind of talk about what's going on. Just a little bit, just a little bit about me. I've been with the organization eleven years, going on twelve years. Prior to working here, I worked in the 13th Congressional District of Congress, also worked for the city of Greensboro. And I've seen the community and the organization change exponentially over my time here. So glad to be here, and hopefully we'll get through this pretty quickly. I'm going to go through a couple of divisions and be glad to take any questions, Mr. Mayor, that you have. Communications and Public Engagement. So one of our divisions that we have is Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Now, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Initiative was something that was started by council in 2020. And as you can see here, there are several areas where DEI is currently working and functioning, whether it's learning and development, in portions of human resources, or community partnerships, our Minority Women in Business Enterprise. So those are the areas where we've taken the DEI function and incorporated into our day-to-day standard operating procedure in those functions. Just some key things that have gone on in recent time through learning and development. In '23, we had DEI orientation sessions for our council. We also did training for our senior leadership. Currently, we have workforce training that's going on with fire and police. Those should be done in March. And then there'll be training sessions that will be for the remaining workforce in April. For MWBE, there's currently a disparity study process that's going on. Our folks in DEI have been really key in helping Bobby's department and Cynthia navigate some of those elements, part of Steering Committee and some of their strategic planning items. Also, vendor engagement and program development. Many of you attended the Med Week, which was really an expose of what some of the similar regional efforts have been in kind of celebrating and giving those women and minority businesses opportunities to showcase and highlight how they could be, continue to be a part of our organizations. From a human resources standpoint, things like our hiring panels, career fairs, job openings, those things, we've worked with Human Resources and tried to really help with any of those areas that would allow us to be competitive and would allow us to continue to underscore those key important initiatives. The employment engagement survey data we did, where we were hearing from our employees about what they felt and how they saw themselves in the organization. And the ongoing piece is a policy review and data analysis. And that's with talent sourcing and talent acquisition that you've seen there. From community partnerships, many of you are familiar with some of the work that we've done with One High Point Commission, Community Builders, which many of you are familiar with, is, and it's a group of residents that have taken interest in a lot of the equity and the changes that we see in the community. Partners like the YWCA and many others have been involved in that. There's community initiatives where other communities who have undertaken DEI work get together and sort of compare notes. And most recently, we are entering in for the All American City Award and just highlighting some of the things through our DEI, highlighting some of the things that our city has done in recent years that have made a change and helped us evolve into the community that we are now. I'm going to switch gears here and now talk a little bit about Human Relations. What I failed to do is I want to introduce three of our, three division managers here. I just talked about DEI, so Jelani Biggs is here. He is our DEI officer. I'm about to talk about Human Relations. We see Race McCray here. He's our Human Relations Manager. And last but not least, my first hire ever, Ryan Ferguson, he is our Marketing Manager. So I neglected to introduce them, so they're here. Human Relations. We talk about Human Relations. Human Relations has been a part of this organization in some capacity since the 60s, actually. And if you look at functions and scope, they're pretty clear there. Areas of civil rights, equal opportunity, and community relations. So one of the things that you'll see with Human Relations is it's our opportunity to reach out and touch, engage with members of our community on a number of things, but also gives our community, especially in some communities that either haven't been, whether they've been overlooked, marginalized, or don't know how to navigate the system, gives them an opportunity to have their voice heard, and we point them in the direction of resources and information that can help them. Human Relations Commission is one of the functions that the Human Relations Division works with. US Council appoints the members there, and the commission, they will come to you periodically with initiatives and programs. Several years ago, the council had asked that the commission come through on a regular basis and provide annually a work plan. So it gives the council and gives the organization an opportunity to see what upcoming initiatives our group is working on. And it has yielded a lot of things that we'll talk about here in a second. But community events, anything where we have an opportunity to reach out and connect with the community in a way that promotes those principles, those core principles that we talked about in the first slide. This slide is a little tricky, so let me explain it. The, what's emboldened is where we are year-to-date, and then there's just some comparison on the subsequent bullet points. So from the Civil Rights section, you'll see, one of the things that our Human Relations Division does is it deals with landlord-tenant issues where we can. So year-to-date, we've had 92 landlord-tenant issues addressed. You can see 142 total we had in last fiscal year. Fair Housing. For those of you that have followed the last couple of years, there's been a lot of discussion and community information on fair housing, which essentially is federal law that makes sure that folks in our protected classes have the same opportunity to enjoy living standards and quality of life and housing standards that everyone else enjoys. So last year, last fiscal year, we had 11 fair housing complaints, and so far this year, we've had eight. Normally, when we get fair housing complaints, and Race, Race McCray will be talking a little bit more with you about this later on in the week. But those fair housing complaints, they come into the division, and we help give information, educate as much as we can. The way we're structured now, if the issue rises to something that seems like it's got the pieces of fair housing involved, we make recommendations to send those to our partners in Raleigh, where Raleigh takes the cases from that point. Last but not least, fair housing trainings. We do training. It's usually customer-led, so there may be a realtors organization, there may be the Housing Authority. They'll come in and they'll ask questions and ask us to conduct training, where we talk about those protected classes and some of the rights and responsibilities that landlords and tenants have.
Yes, Mr. Mayor? For clarity, this number of complaints, this is your number of complaints referred, not necessarily the number of complaints that you receive?
Right. Yes, the complaints that you see in that second bullet, those are fair housing complaints. So we get a number of interactions with customers. Those complaints are the ones that would rise to the level of some type of information gathering investigation that's outside the scope of what we have as an organization to handle, so.
But there's some margin there in terms of total number of complaints you've probably gotten from a call that maybe it wasn't referred, maybe it was just.
Yes, yes. In fact, we have, and Race is here, we have a number of interactions with customers every day, and they could be on a number of things. When we get those interactions and they're dealing specifically with housing issues for protected classes, where we have items involved like lease information, where people are feeling like they have, because of the particular protected class they belong in, that they have particular issues. We have staff that have a number of criteria that we'll listen for, and if we hear those things, we recommend those to the agency in Raleigh. But yes, those complaints represent the ones that have been forwarded because we couldn't handle them at our level, and we moved them on. But we have a number of contacts with our residents every day. They walk in by phone, by email, et cetera. I don't know if that answered your question?
No, it does. It does. And I do have a follow-up, actually. And this, I know this is coming up for discussion later this week, so forgive me. The four fair housing trainings that are conducted, do you all ever, and it may not be a way to track this, but knowing that in some ways, the conjecture here is some people don't know that there is a potential complaint to be made until they become aware that, hey, this is something that rises to the level that I should be calling someone about. I almost wonder how those fair housing trainings lead to people saying, oh, wow, that's really helpful. And then, I don't know, do you all track when people are making a complaint saying, hey, I learned about whatever, calling you all from a training, or someone told me about you all, or something of that nature?
Yeah, so we, a lot of our complaints that are driven like that, you know, when we say landlord-tenant issues address, you know, that number, that is a small, small fraction of how many people we've interacted with. You'll actually see in an upcoming slide, because most of our fair housing education that would result in those kind of things tend to not be the trainings, the formal trainings that we're offering, but tend to be us out at an event where we play games and educate people about the Fair Housing Act. And we've talked to roughly, it's over 6,000 people at events. So those tend to be more, in those conversations, someone will say, oh, well, you know, it's funny, you told me about that, blah, blah, blah. When we're talking about the trainings, those tend to be more often, they are sometimes resident-focused. We worked with Greensboro to do our Tenant Leadership Academy, for example, where it's specifically, hey, we're going into just a group of identified neighborhood leaders, and we're telling them about this. But they tend to be more often actually the provider base, where we say, hey, realtors, we want you to be fair and not discriminate. And here are the tricky spots, because a lot of our discrimination that we find, some of it is absolutely intentional and terrible, but some of it, as a realtor, they're doing their best. They want to not discriminate, and they may follow the fallible law through some, through not being aware of how something might be taken. And those are what the formal trainings are usually trying to address.
Nice. Nice. Thank you.
So Race, I'm sorry. Race, so what you're saying is that your interactions with the public, once you educate them on what constitutes a fair housing violation, that sometimes you get responses when people recognize their own situation probably could potentially constitute a fair housing violation?
Yes. So the, often the fair housing complaints, some of them are, folks have maybe met us and come in and talked to, but a lot of them start initially as landlord-tenant complaints. So they'll come in and they'll say, hey, my landlord is not repairing my house. You know, I've had an electric outlet that's been out four days, or standing water, that, you know, they just won't come in. And that is a landlord-tenant issue. That is not a fair housing issue by itself. And we, you know, do our standard practice of saying, hey, what do you mean there's standing water? Is this coming, you know, is this, that your sink won't drain? Or do you mean like there's water coming through the roof, or blah, 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 things like that? But then they might casually say, well, you know, I mean, part of the problem is that it's that I'm a woman. And all my neighbors who are men, he responds right away to their complaints and then requests for service. And in that conversation, then suddenly we're asking different questions.
Thank you, Race. I skipped ahead. So if you look at the second bullet on the community outreach, through a number of ways, Race talked about events organized. We try to find events and opportunities to get out in the community, disseminate fair housing information. Let our landlords and our housing providers know that we are a resource, so they can ask questions before they draw up that lease or change that policy, just be as a resource. And so part of the interactions that we were talking about earlier come through community outreach and events. And then, Race, we have even more interactions of people that come separately into the office through phone calls, et cetera. So those are, those are some of the examples of the community outreach, of how we get the information out, get the word out. From an equal opportunity standpoint, there'll be a presentation later on this week regarding the Fair Housing Assistance Program. And another, another piece that we're working on now is a language access policy, which is a collaborative with University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and surrounding communities, and just figuring out the best ways to reach people who have English as a second language, who need to access our services, who need information about important things happening to them. And Race is working with that group, and that's another initiative that's.
That's a huge piece. If I can just interject, in terms of equity, people who have the language barrier, ensuring that we're not letting that be a challenge or impediment to them being engaged like any other constituent, I think it's huge. And I know we don't use it on our moniker anymore, Ryan, but North Carolina International City. All right. I think that is, and that's not a jab at that. I love the new logo, just. But, but, you know, it's North Carolina International City. Part of that is how do we, in a very equitable way, engage all of our citizenry, right? And I love that.
Okay. Upcoming programs that you'd see, so 2024, there are a number of them, a number of them there. With the, with the programming that we, that we have, we are across the board, whether it's swim press program later on in the summer, youth enrichment, there's an opportunity, a job fair. I know some of you have been working with that. It's, which is what's going to give our youth an opportunity to get connected with, with work and employment. So every one of these programs and many other things gives us an opportunity to engage and interact with the community. And this is one of the ways where you will see that division and you'll see our department making a difference for the general public. All right, I'm going to skip over now to marketing and communications. What we create in High Point changes the world. Mr. Mayor, I think that's what you were trying to say earlier?
Yeah.
So, marketing and branding. We've seen in the, in the last few years, our marketing efforts, it essentially started with the desire to look into changing the way that we are seen by the community. And we, if you look at this timeline, some of the highlights, we started a marketing and branding task force. And over the next several months, we had pop-up events. Many of you were in attendance last August at the brand launch that was at Truist Point. There were a sea of people there, and that was really the announcement to the world that our brand has changed. And we've, we've started that process, but it's important to remember that that was just the start. There's a number of things that we'll be doing regarding implementation. So we brought our vendor Civic Brand back to help us with the implementation and rollout. So pop-up strategies, where we are visibly in the community as we continue to push the brand. Things that you take for granted every day that you see, whether it's style guides, department logos. And there's a huge demand. For some reason, people like these vests and shirts and sweaters with that new logo on. So I can't express enough how well the community has connected with that branding initiative. We were, at the beginning, we were like, I don't know, but it has really, really taken off. And it's, it's people like, like our Assistant City Manager Damon Duquesne, who loves the new flag. We had no idea that he would love it this much, and there it is.
Was he the one who dressed up like it for Halloween?
I believe that was him. As far as our website, we get over 100,000 visitors a month, and you can see some of the factoids there. Over 60% of our customers that connect to our website and connect with us, connect with a mobile device. So when you're thinking about how we receive, a lot of people are doing it from a, from a mobile device. Most people are following us on Saturdays and Wednesdays. They want to pay their bill. They want to know when their, when their collection schedule is and information about the library. Even people across the country. That international flair there, Mr. Mayor. You get a little bit of UK and India visiting in with us as well. Social media, we get on our platforms that we have 1.6 million impressions. Our audience is a visual audience, so what are we doing to capture people's imaginations with graphics, with videos? Facebook is our number-one platform for engagement. Our audience is over 70% female in the 35 to 55 range. Our post-reach, just for the month of January, 105,000 of those post-engagement. And what we're seeing in our post-reach and our post-engagement, we're seeing a huge bump from our previous year. And I'd like to think that the branding initiative had a lot to do with it. But the things that we put out, the clicks, the videos, those things are catching on.
I just want to say, as a female in that age range, I was given a top fan badge for the city of High Point government today.
We knew this meeting was going.
Strategic.
I can't give those out, so thank you for your.
So, great segue. So one of the things that we, that we do that is different and above and beyond what most people think about is advertising. So did you know that we can find a geographical area, put a fence around it, and populate that area with a message? Well, that helps us when we're doing things like campaigns, we're trying to get same-day hiring events, and we're looking at people in different parts. So maybe for, for public services, it's targeted advertising. Social media is a big, for many of you that do that in other areas of your life, social media is a great equalizer in many ways of getting information out quickly to the, to the community. So we, through radio, through social, geo-fencing, there's a number of ways. But where we saw that, and where we constantly see that, is in events that we do for our departments. So Public Services had a same, has had a few same-day hiring events, and we use those methods to draw people to those events. And Ryan, you want to talk a little bit about the last same-day hiring event that we had with Public Services?
We've had, we've had, I think, three different campaigns with them that they've asked us to kind of help us out with. This last one, we had a couple of weeks to work with, so over that period of time, we've done everything across the board. You want to hear it, see it, touch and feel it, right? So we've done billboards, we've done radio advertising, and we're strategic about how we advertise that stuff. So we advertise it on Sunday through Wednesday. When you're going to work, and let's be honest, who wants to go to work on Monday morning, right? So when you're coming off that third shift, I'm hitting you with radio ads. I'm hitting you with billboard ads while you're driving either in or from work on those specific days. Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, the weekend, right? People love that. We do it so much in that way. But we set up fences around different areas that would essentially capture the people that we wanted. We took a look at like Sheetz and Lowe's and Home Depots, everywhere from gas stations to liquor stores, to see how and who that targeted audience is. We captured them, retargeted ads to them, and then continued to do so through, again, radio, digital, and things like that. So we had the opportunity to capture those people. IP advertising. When you talk about Big Brother and, you know, I can find out what you guys are looking at on your router, essentially, and incorporate that through, sign us up through Hulu advertising, so we can, you know, kind of capture those IP addresses on what kind of ice cream you like. And, you know, then we would send you ice cream ads. That's kind of things that are happening, that we can, capabilities to do that.
Thank you, Ryan. So when you see messaging going out and when you see information going out, it's not just happenstance. You know, we try to be strategic. We try to use best practices and creativity to try to get the message out to the, to the community.
Jaron, can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, because when you were just talking about all that, I had a thought on, I love Noel and Brandon do such a great job. I love the, what did we just have? So I was just, my thought is, you know, everybody kind of likes to see themselves like on a chemo-tron or in something. What if you went to some different departments, like let the department head know, and maybe do some filming of people as they work, and then let them kind of be actors and actresses and the thing too. And then that, they will share it on theirs, because they're all excited and their families, and what are your thoughts on that?
One of our, one of our most popular initiatives that we did a little while, a couple of years ago, was we did a sort of a Dirty Jobs kind of scenario, and we went with Public Services and kind of shadowed them and ran it as a video. That was one of our most famous, or most popular.
It still is.
And it still is. So there's ways to do that. We just, with the limited time and resources that we have, we just have to be strategic as far as when we do it, and so we try to get the biggest bang for the buck.
Yeah.
But, but yes, we have, we've been able to, what we try to do is try to find creativ- But, but yes, we have, we've been able to, what we try to do is try to find creative ways to make otherwise routine and mundane information appeal to the public. And I think we've been very, very successful at, at doing that in, in recent years. Uh, one, one thing that, that is, this is not a theater presentation, but one of the, one of the.
Is that the new theater logo?
That is, that is the new theater logo, yes. And, and so one, one of the things that, that we've, we have under the, under our curfew is the, the theater. And we, a couple of years ago, we decided to take the theater staff, when this, when this person, um, when this person left, decided to take the theater staffer and bring them on to the team. So we had under one umbrella, the creativity, the energy, and now, the last two years, we've kind of served as the, the marketing and advertising agency for High Point Theater. So when you see some of those, uh, videos and some of those ads, and just, just really quickly, uh, there were four sellout shows, uh, this year.
No, that was, that was coming, sorry.
Of course, there were, I'm sorry, thank you, there were, there were four sellout shows in, in twenty twenty-two, but if you look at this most recent season, there were records in attendance and ticket sales. And looking at what we have just so far in this season, as you can see in the graphic, we're on track to even go beyond that. So they're really, really good people that, that work over at the theater, but we'd like to think that some of that success has been with the creative way that we've put that information out to the community, and, and we think it's sort of paid dividends in that As we close out here, graphic design, some of you have probably seen some of these things around. Uh, Councilwoman Cook, you've probably seen this, as with your activity on Facebook, you've probably seen all these. But, but flyers, decals, banners, et cetera, we've, we, we put those things out, and this is coming from in-house. We're, we're, we're designing these things, but we think just finding, you know, a flyer's a flyer, right? Anyone can do a flyer. But if I can have something that catches people's eye and gives them the information that they need, we think that connects and that gets people's attention. We've recently put together, uh, with the, with the support of, of our manager and senior leadership, uh, we've, we've started a print shop years ago, years and years ago, back when, back when Bobby was a little boy. Um, we had, we, we had, we used to have a print shop internal in the, in City Hall. Uh, what we found over time is that the departments were taking, uh, their opportunities based on their time and energy, doing, doing print jobs, but consistently, consistent. We talked about the brand colors, you know, we'd have slightly different colors here, and maybe someone negotiated a better price there. And so this puts all, the, the majority of our printing needs in, right downstairs. Uh, our partner, um, Rico, as you can see, helps us with turnaround time, uh, brand control. And so Ryan, the, the official launch, uh, they're, they're kind of doing our mailroom. When, when are we doing that, that kickoff?
So on Valentine's Day, if you come down and visit us, we're gonna have an open house. We'll kind of show you all the different products, you may or may not get a Valentine if you're lucky, so. Um, but we're just gonna show everybody what we can do, how we can do it. We've recorded a video that we're gonna, um, push out and advertise beforehand to invite everybody to come.
Did you all print what you put on the windows in the building in downtown?
We had that.
That came from this?
That specifically did not. We can do that downstairs. We, we wanted to get those up, uh, so we, we had a outside vendor help us with that, because the machine was not ready yet. But yes, that, we can do vehicle ads, we can do things like that.
Madam Manager.
No, I said, did you know, was there an increase in staff to handle this new capability?
Well, what, what we did with the, with the current contract that we, we have, what we did was we looked at what the offerings were that Rico could offer us. We didn't have to add additional staff in order to do this. What we did was we repurposed the print costs that we already had in the organization, and we found a way to kind of focus those and redirect those, those, uh, those resources in a way that the contract, Rico has our printers already that they do across the organization. So this is saving us money in a sense from a cost control. We know where everything's coming from, we know the delivery point, and so this is giving us an opportunity to be more efficient with the dollars that we do have. So there was not an increase in staff on that.
Councilwoman Andrew, one thing I was, um, going to say in this part of last year's budget, we've, um, included this change to moving to having our print services in-house. We did have one employee that was working in the mailroom that would spend time running to our different facilities to deliver mail. So we've been able to reassign that employee back to their department to be able to help their, the customer service while having the contractor come in. It also helps us maintain and control our brand a little bit better. So the timing was perfect as we were launching our new brand and being able to bring those services in-house.
Excellent. Okay. And video and photo, um, you probably don't recognize any of the people in this, uh, in this graphic, but, uh, department videos, um, you were, you were talking about that. Who's seen the one High Point Commission video? We, we produced that video in-house, and people have been calling and sending us all over the country, just talking about how, how well it was done. Brandon's not here, Brandon Cook is our, um, one of our communication specialists, got the footage and put that together. But video and photo, we have those capabilities here in-house, and many of you have seen, many of you have seen things that we've done and probably didn't even know we did it. But tho- those are some capabilities that we have in addition. Uh, some of you had some contact with us when you did your headshots, uh, uh, coming in, and then so, and everything in between, but, uh, video and photo is another capability we have. Last but not least, uh, we have currently, if you are a Spectrum subscriber, there is a PEG channel, uh, that, Public Education and Government Channel, that the, the state subsidizes for, for any city in the, in the, um, that, that wants to sign up for it in the state. But they provide us with a, a space and a platform to broadcast, and we post some of the content that we talked about, video, we post on that. It's, it's an older system, we've been using it, um, since I was a little boy, I think. And, and so the software to run the system is kind of run its course, and you have to be a Spectrum subscriber to use it. So one of the things that we'll be coming back to, uh, council with at, at a, in the near future, is a functioning capability that will allow us to expand the reach so that the same way you have these streaming apps that you use for a number of, of things, have that same capability to be able to share our council videos, um, our city videos, council information, upcoming events. So we're excited about that. Uh, meeting production currently, as you, as you know, we do audio broadcasts for the, for the meetings, streamed on YouTube that are in the virtual public meeting, um, URL that you see there. We also support, at times, there's, uh, events, press conferences, you name it, where we're able to do those meeting productions. And as I said earlier, we're working on a, a plan to give us that streaming meeting capability, uh, on several platforms to our residents. That is my presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to take those at this time.
Here, thank you, Jerome. I know I, I frequently get questions about how folks can get new logo merchandise. Um, how do we, how do we envision getting more of that merchandise to the public? I know, you know, from a city standpoint, you guess, can't continuously create to give away. Um, you know, what is our, what is our plan to make sure that public has access to our new branded merchandise?
Well, what, from a, from a staff standpoint, we are looking at some of the inputs of what it would take and what, what elements we would need and what elements the private sector has in order to facilitate that. So currently, we're, we're looking at some of the things that we can do. There's a lot of moving parts there, whether it's, uh, licensing, whether it's inventory, but we, we feel like we're making pretty good progress on that, we're, we're kind of moving along. As soon as we, we have something that our senior leadership can look at, um, Madam Manager, I know we'll be, we'll be sharing that at the appropriate time with, with council, but we are making great airway in figuring that out, but just give us a little bit more time.
No, no, I just, I, I, I know it's a complicated issue, it's just, um, you know, I think there's an opportunity for us, um, with our, with some partners in the community, um, retailers in the community, I think it's an opportunity for us to make sure that we get our, get that brand penetration that we're looking for, uh, and also kind of offset some of the cost of, of getting that out there from just the print, uh, the print side of producing it from, from the city. And so, um, you know, I think, I think the, the thing that I'm most encouraged about in this scenario is how much demand there is in the public for our branded merchandise. And I think if, if we were not, if I was not asking this question, I wouldn't say, and I wouldn't feel so high about the success of the brand launch, you know? That, but folks are actually emailing, calling, stopping, hey, where can we get the t-shirts, the hats? Um, and I think that says how successful overall brand launch has been. Um, so just want to make sure that we, uh, keep maximizing the, uh, efficacy of the brand.
Councilwoman Holmes, our ultimate goal would be for us to be able to have an online store where certain materials would be available.
You read my mind, you read my mind.
And we, we've talked with that, um, our major director and also our, uh, uh, marketing manager, of having a store where things like the High Point, um, cup, insulated cups, the H dot t-shirts would be available, the caps. We just want to make sure that, um, things that we have that would be available out there would not say like City of High Point. We always want to make sure we can differentiate between our employee staff and these other cities' brand versus those things that might be available in the public. The H dot's been very popular, different colors that people want to be able to mix and match, so being able to find, find a platform where they could do that is what we ultimately would like to see, but there's a process.
Yeah, Madam Manager, I was speaking almost really exclusively about the secondary logo, right? That's the one I think is, that's, that's really caught everybody's attention. Um, and so, you know, I had a conversation with, uh, with Ryan about, uh, engaging our partners and creating different lines, you know, letting, letting some of our partners take the secondary logo and create that, and then we have that available for the public, whether it be High Point by Design, or the, the Furniture Market, or Visit High Point, and everyone create their own, uh, variation of the H dot, and then have that available for the public. And I think that creates brand awareness for all of our partners, and also, uh, allows us to continue to spread the popularity of the brand.
Some people feel connected.
Yes.
Well, I had contacted them before Christmas, because I wanted to buy a lot of Christmas presents. Yeah, because I love it, I mean, I get, I get my friends trousers, anything with High Point, a few trousers, so I really wanted to get some people the H dot, and, and so that, you've kind of answered me, and, and I love the thought, and I, one of the preliminary thoughts were, you know, we were even retailing, but maybe like, um, Lederpol, I think, they already retail, the museum, they already have retail. But anyway, but I know y'all are working diligently on that, and, yeah, there's definitely a demand. I like it.
All right. Jerome and team, thank you all so much. It's been a fantastic presentation, and we're, we're so excited about everything that's to come, um, with the work of Communications and Public Engagement. I know this council, one of the priorities that, that was important, is how do we get more folks connected to what's going on, and with the, the, the work of, uh, UOL's team, I know the Committee on Transparency, Engagement, Communication, that's chaired by Mayor Proton Holmes, um, that's something we want to keep leaning in on, and we appreciate UOL's partnership as we do that.
Thank you for your time.
Um, our, our next piece is a departmental overview from Budget Evaluation, and then after that, we'll hear from our Financial Services Department, I believe in that order. So first, we're gonna hear from Stephen Harreluk, our Budget Evaluation Director, and then Bobby Fishon, our Finance Director.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Jefferson, and good afternoon to you and members of the council. Uh, I'm Stephen Harreluk, I'm the city's Budget and Performance Director. Uh, and we have a brief presentation, uh, where we're gonna talk about kind of what we do in budget, uh, who we are, a little bit about the timeline of the budget process, and we're also gonna go through some slides, just to give you some highlights of the current adopted budget. And so, uh, what do we do? Uh, there's a lot of bullets here, uh, I'll kind of just highlight a couple of those first two, the preparation of the annual operating budget and preparation of the five-year capital improvement plan. Uh, that's probably the, you know, most visual thing that we do. That involves for budget, reviewing all the requests, uh, discussing with management, going through justifications, asking a lot of questions, and, uh, you know, trying to put something together that then is presented to you, uh, usually in early May. Uh, other things we do, overseeing the implementation of the strategic plan. Uh, the Budget and Evaluation Department coordinates the annual nonprofit funding application process. Uh, we compile all those applications and then, uh, put them together for the Finance Committee, who then reviews and makes an ultimate recommendation to the full council. Uh, we're kind of the coordinators of conducting the bi-annual citizen survey, uh, that's done through an outside party, uh, that's done every two years. Uh, the next survey will start, uh, next fall, early winter, uh, and we've done the survey, uh, every two years since about two thousand and seven. And so, uh, we've been able to capitalize on, you know, kind of that repetition of questions and seeing how we've trended over time. Uh, other things we put together, uh, we do the comprehensive fee schedule, uh, from time to times on your agenda items, you'll see budget amendments included with items, usually from departments, sometimes from me. Uh, we help coordinate that process. Uh, who we are, we are one of the smaller departments in the city. Uh, there are four of us. Uh, there's myself, the Budget and Performance Director. Uh, we have a strategic initiatives manager, uh, who's with us here today, Meredith Martin, uh, there in the back. Uh, and then we have two budget analysts. Uh, and mainly, what do we produce? Uh, the annual adopted budget document, and that includes the five-year capital improvement plan. If you haven't seen a hard copy, uh, budget doesn't get a lot of show and tell at a lot of these meetings, like some of the public works departments, this is what the document looks like. Uh, it includes the five-year capital plan. Uh, I was thinking, there's a lot in this, so if one of your constituents said, I want to learn more about the budget, I don't have time to read all three hundred plus pages, what should I read? Uh, I would, uh, refer them to the Trans Middle Letter and the City Manager's Budget Message. That usually kind of covers everything that's in the budget, and that there's more detailed information, they can see it where they see fit. Uh, other things we put together, the comprehensive fee schedule, uh, and we publish that on the budget page on the city's website. Uh, and we also conduct reports and studies as requested. Uh, a few notes on the budget document. Uh, we do receive the distinguished budget presentation award. Uh, I looked through our archives, and we've received that every year since two thousand and one. Uh, there were a couple of years in the nineties where it received, but I didn't see one, an award for year two thousand. Uh, and the criteria for that is really what we see the budget document to be, and that is to serve as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications tool. And so it really serves all those roles at once. Uh, this timeline shows kind of the annual budget development process. Uh, the fiscal year is July to June. Uh, usually that July to December timeframe is doing special studies, uh, doing things like the citizen survey, some pre-budget tasks. Uh, I'm usually thinking about how we're gonna balance the next year's budget during those months. Uh, and then each January, we kick off the budget for departments, uh, and they turn in their requests, uh, late January, early February. Uh, we're in the middle of that process, this Friday is actually our last deadline for departments. Budget staff begin to review the requests in March and April, excuse me, in February and March. Later into March, early April, we start having discussions with the City Manager's Office on, here's what the requests are, uh, here's some of the justifications, here's how the revenue picture looks. Uh, and in April, we're starting to really develop that manager's recommended budget and begin putting together the budget document. Uh, in early May, uh, at least since I've been here, uh, which will be three years next week, uh, the first meeting in May is when we presented the manager's recommended budget. Uh, there's a budget public hearing, uh, which is required by law, which we have also in May. And then there are several city council budget workshops where staff will kind of go into the weeds in certain areas of the budget, capital, certain funds, things were highlighted, changes in fees. Uh, and we'll also respond to questions from council, either provide those through handouts or slides, or have departments available to answer them if it's more based on their subject matter expertise. Uh, and then annually, the budget is adopted, usually that first meeting in June, uh, and then goes into effect the following July first. Uh, so the next three slides are just three of the ways of showing the current year's FY twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget. Uh, so this slide, first slide is by fund, so just gonna highlight a couple. Um, kind of right here, the general fund, uh, we talk about the general fund a lot, uh, and it's kind of your general services, so example of general fund department, uh, police, fire, parks and recreation, planning, uh, budget evaluation is the general fund department, the city manager's office, uh, it's kind of just those general government services. Uh, not gonna go through every one, but, uh, rotating right here, central services funds. Uh, central services are also what we call internal service funds, uh, and that doesn't explain what they are at all to you, but, uh, the customer for a central service fund is another city department. Uh, so fleet services, in this example, fleet services is buying vehicles for the other departments, that's ultimately their customer. Uh, computer replacement, the new print shop, uh, our radio maintenance, those are our main central service funds. Uh, and then water sewer, electric, stormwater, parking, transit, and solid waste are what we call enterprise funds. Uh, and so an enterprise fund, you know, in theory operates more like a business. Uh, the rep, the charges that they have for service are the main revenue generators. Uh, water sewer, people that pay their water bill, that's what's funding all the expenses for the water sewer system. They're not really funded by sales taxes or property taxes like the general fund would be. Uh, and just the other category, uh, just because we grouped some of the smaller funds, that includes our parking fund, uh, special revenue funds, which is our grants that we that includes our parking fund, uh, special revenue funds, which is our grants that we receive from, uh, state and federal, uh, entities, our market authority fund, and then we have, uh, an economic development incentive fund, which is where we pay incentives to business out of. Uh, moving on to revenues, uh, and I didn't mention the previous slide, but the total adopted budget for the current year is 478.5 million dollars. And so, uh, the upper right slice, charges for service, uh, that is by far the largest revenue source, uh, but that's, you know, all your electric revenues or majority of your electric revenues, water sewer, solid waste, uh, those are user fees or charges for service, uh, but also some parks and rec fees, if you go play golf at one of the golf courses and state the campground, that's also a charge for service. Uh, kind of down here, intergovernmental, uh, that's revenues we get from other governments. Uh, you know, FTA provides funding for transit, uh, housing and urban development, they provide, uh, funds for community development, uh, we have grants for capital, grants for operating, uh, we receive what's called PAL bill funds from the state, uh, and those go toward our street resurfacing efforts, so just any revenues we're receiving from another government. Uh, and then there in the kind of lower left, property tax, uh, so, uh, that is our property tax revenue, uh, the city's property tax rate is 61.75 cents for a hundred dollars of valuation that is divided between the debt service fund and the general fund, uh, 3.4 cents is allocated to debt service and the remaining 58.35 cents allocated to the general fund. Uh, one cent on the tax rate currently generates about 1.34 million dollars. Uh, and then lastly, sales and use taxes, uh, just right there to the left of property tax, that's mostly sales tax, but, uh, what's a use tax, uh, you know, occupancy tax also falls into that umbrella, but, uh, I'd say about 31 million of that 41.5 million, uh, is sales taxes.
Stephen, thi- this may be a, a question that I, I don't know if you, um, looking at, can you go back to the last slide, sir? That property tax number at 17.4%?
Yes.
Where does that generally stand in terms of a government's, uh, revenue by percent? Is that, is that low, is that high?
I would say for a city like High Point, it's going to be on the lower end because we're an electrocity. So anyone that's electrocity, property tax is going to be a slicer, a smaller slice of the pie. Uh, I would say, I would speculate that, you know, controlling for electric, it's probably, you know, within range of what some other governments, but we can look and see exactly where we fall with that comparison.
The, the key on that is about 50% of general fund support and that's, I would say, pretty normal, um, for other cities as well.
Yeah, and I'll note, uh, we talked about the general fund a few slides ago, uh, 75% of general fund revenues or just barely 75% is property tax and sales taxes, and so those are really driving the, the funding for that fund. Uh, and this is my last slide, uh, and so this is just another way we look at expenses and that's by expense category. Uh, so again, we're an electrocity, so we try and control for that one large line item of wholesale power at 90 million dollars. Uh, personnel, about 33% of our budget, uh, like all our governments, uh, salaries and benefits aren't really the big driver. We have about, uh, I believe seven, little, almost not quite 1,800 authorized positions, that's, uh, full-time and part-time. For the most part, we have a position authorized, we budget for, uh, if we know there's going to be some salary savings, we might take that into account, but for the most part, you know, we're trying to anticipate that. Uh, the general fund has about two-thirds of those positions, and so, uh, salaries and benefits are, are usually our biggest driver and that's, uh, what's been driving, uh, a lot of expenses over the past few years. Uh, operating costs, uh, that's your supplies, your fuel, utilities, software, uh, things of that nature. Uh, capital is kind of your higher dollar, your infrastructure improvements, uh, debt service payments, you know, uh, interest and lease payments we have. And so, uh, that's just another way we kind of look at, you know, how are things driving, uh, how we get to that 478.5 million dollars. Uh, so this is short, it's kind of, you know, high level overview, but happy to answer any questions, uh, or for any questions after Bobby, uh, talks about the financial services side.
Same question for debt service and capital in terms of how they relate, um, 6.8% and again, I know wholesale power is a very unique expense for us, but if you could control for that not being there, how, how are we doing with that debt service number? Is that, uh, is that figure higher or lower than the median?
Uh, we need to take a look, just to see, because I wouldn't want to comment the other way. I know that capital is one that it's going to fluctuate from year to year based on, uh, you know, how other, how other governments structure their capital, how we structure our capital, uh, but we can take a look and see where we lie with some of our comparison cities.
Yes, Steve, um, in terms of, uh, capacity for personnel, um, is that determinative of initiatives? Like say for instance, you have, um, Toronto's department, uh, they look at the initiatives that they have and they determine their potential manpower based on that. Um, is it basically a, a budget function or do you have a cap annually that you say, hey, this is where we are on personnel, we're not going to spend more than this, is it a cap per budget year or, um, we say, we, based on initiatives, uh, departments have flexibility to, to be able to expand?
Uh, I think for expansion, we always tell departments, if you need something, please ask for it, uh, don't assume that we, we know you need it, uh, the worst thing that budget or the manager's office can do is say no. Uh, but within that, you know, we ask departments for justifications when they ask for, you know, new authorized positions, uh, then we ask them to almost re-justify that and ask them as many questions about, what do you need the position for, is there a capacity, is there workload? Uh, I always like to ask, you know, what happens if you don't get this position, you know? Uh, you know, some things drive priority when we're deciding what goes in the budget, uh, if something council has, uh, said, we want to see this in the budget, uh, if some of the manager's office wants to see in the budget, uh, if there's availability of resources, kind of, all that goes kind of in, are all the variables before we come out kind of with a decision. Uh, sometimes it's, are there resources elsewhere that we could, uh, apply to the position? Um, we try to leave no stone unturned, uh, just knowing that, uh, there's, there's only so many resources to go around and, uh, I've never met a department head that couldn't justify the need for something, it's just, you know, really determining, all right, what, is this need better than this need, uh, or, or a higher priority for what's going to ultimately end up in the budget.
If, if, if you don't mind, could you go back one slide?
Sure.
So, Bobby, Bobby, you were saying that the relationship between general fund and electric fund, I mean, property tax and electric fund is about 50%?
Sir, it's, uh, property tax, uh, revenue is about half of general fund revenues in total.
Yeah, and so is that a relationship you try to maintain or is that, so you make adjustments if, if you see an increase, say in, uh, electric, do you try to make, do you suggest that we may maintain a relationship in property tax rates?
So I think, um, kind of some of the computations, that's 17% of the total budget.
Okay.
So we don't, um, think about the general fund in relation to the electric fund.
Okay.
Uh, and, um, one point to the mayor's, um, question earlier about, you know, is that inappropriate on a debt? The, anytime statewide, you're trying to compare yourself to other cities, you have to control for the electrocity, electrocity, uh, factor, is just that, um, you, it's, it's, it's never apples to apples.
Right.
If, if we control for that, we can start comparing ourselves to similar sized cities and that kind of thing, but, um, you, you really have to kind of take that out because it's so large, um, such a, a big utility.
I think you're always going to find a, a caveat depending on who you look at, you know? We go to general fund and say, all right, half of that is funded by property taxes. Um, let's say that's, uh, lower than another city, well, we have a city library, uh, that's a function that's, again, unique to High Point, and so there's caveat number one, that, you know, everyone has something like that, and so I wouldn't say that, you know, we go with everybody saying we need to be at this percentage, but that just seems to be what it, the range that it kind of, you know?
Yeah, I think, okay.
I was gonna say, from a financial perspective, uh, 50% of the general fund means that you, your general fund's at risk for value, a property value, uh, fluctuation affecting your resources more than if it was 40%.
Right.
Um, and so there's probably some cities who are more cautious around that, um, and especially, you know, going through the O eight housing crisis and all that.
Yeah, and, and this is actually a really good topic of, of discussion. Um, you talk about the general fund and how 50% of it is, is covered by property tax and then the other 25% maybe is covered by sales tax, where's all the 25% come from beyond that?
Intergovernmental miscellaneous, like investment income, uh, inspection revenue, parks and recreation, charges for service.
Same like park related.
Uh, made an impact this year since it was open, sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
But that's, that's where the rest of that's coming from.
But to Mike's point, if on the expense side of it, if you've got a general fund expense that has to increase, take for example, we know that, I mean, we're going to be navigating this in some upcoming conversations you all regarding, um, salaries for some of our employees here.
Yeah.
And some of those employees, well, actually if I'm not mistaken, a lot of those employees we're looking at are inside that general fund expense.
Yep.
And so part of our discussion is how do you ensure your revenues on the general fund side can account for that expense jump, right? So 50% is at property tax, 25% is net sales, and now 25% is at a mix of things, intergovernmental interest on things, you know, city lake, new slide, right? Um, I, I think those are just some key pieces to keep in mind. Do you mind going back to the expense slide or going forward to the expense slide? Quick question, in personnel, that number isn't accounted for W two, not 299, sorry, 299s would be contractors, probably in your operating or in?
Yeah, probably your operating, right?
That's correct.
But, so really, operating has a lot of, and, and we talked about this earlier, me and manager, we're talking, where we're seeing some gaps in our, in our vacancies is being made up for, probably some contract support, right? From firms who are coming into engineering and transportation and all types of services. Um, and so it's, it's probably important to know when you see operating, it's not just your paper, paper clips and caffeinated coffee, um, it's literally, it's literally like services that help support our personnel, especially some vacancies we have in personnel.
And my judgment to your, uh, previous point on, uh, you know, looking at, you know, the cost of new initiatives you all may be looking at, uh, part of what we're looking at with, you know, part of the budget is, you know, all those revenues, are they increasing? And if they are increasing, by how much? Uh, and, and how does that compare to previous years when it's increased? And is it more or is it less? And if it's less, why? Uh, and is that a new trend and, you know, if new recurring, uh, dollars are going to be recommended, uh, whether it's new services or existing services, we want to make sure that we're able to pay for them, uh, in not just the following year, but, uh, long term.
Yeah. I want to make space for, for any questions from council and, and I will say in particular, I appreciate all four of our new councilmen being here. A big part of these departmental overviews is, is really, I mean, this first six months, I always think it's crazy, your first six months on the job, you're asked to pass a yearly half billion dollar budget, um, on top of, add, there's all the phone calls for speed bumps and raccoons, um, and so.
It's all ramp.
Yeah, 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 so, so I want to make space here, you all, and we don't have to rush through this, but if you all have any questions for Stephen in terms of budget, um, this is a good time to ask.
I got a couple. Um, I just wanted to, with our current debt and how resilient, I mean, if we end up in a recession and revenues are impacted and sort of, you have a sense of, would, would we be able to navigate, uh, kind of a recession with our current debt levels?
Uh, I'll let Bobby, but, but I'll say, uh, since the majority of our debt is covered by property taxes, property taxes are, I won't say 100% recession proof, but they're a lot more resilient than sales taxes.
Yeah, just for, uh, when we went through the 2008 housing crisis, property taxes were still collected at, you know, plus 90.
Plus 90.
So it is very resilient, you know, you do see a, a reduction in sales tax and, but we typically, I mean, our debt is first and foremost what we have to pay, right? So we do that before we do anything else.
Just to add on to that, um, the reason you have so much AAA rated debt in North Carolina is because of local government action for one standpoint, I'm sure you all have heard about them in passing or either in practice, and, um, you know, they ensure that when we issue debt, we're going to be able to pay for it, they actually have abilities to step in and force us to pay for it if for some reason we said we weren't going to. Uh, so they are, uh, as part of that process, it's heavily vetted, um, that we'll be able to support this debt long-term. We have a healthy fund balance, um, to handle, uh, emergencies as they might come up. I, it's hard to imagine a situation where we are affected in such a negative way that everyone else isn't also, um, that would put us in that kind of condition.
I guess that relates to another question, because I was looking at the manager's briefing and, um, the debt from the general, the general fund is wanting to pay 15 billion this year I think, and, and then up in the monthly financial report, it was, the debt service was at 3 billion, so to pay that off, so is that being paid some other way?
There may be confusion there between the general fund and the general debt service fund. So there's a general debt service fund which pays for all the governmental owned debt, and then the general fund itself, there are a few leases in there, like fire trucks and some equipment we purchase or, uh, rented leased, um, that would show up in there.
Okay, makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, and, and I think to the point you just brought up, I mean, heck, three years ago, 2020, oh, four years ago, geez, I'm sorry, I'm missing years in that life, I know. Um, we had a projected $7 million shortfall in terms of sales tax and, uh, we certainly had to have a hard conversation trying to figure out, what do we do with some of those expenses and if we have to manage it throughout that process.
That's what I was going, I lost my mind. I feel sorry for you guys, having to go on.
Yeah, for sure. Any, any other questions?
And if any questions come up after, as you're reviewing some of the budget document information online, which I'm sure you all will, uh, the contact information, uh, is obviously his website, I, you know, through one of the assistant managers from the city manager, happy to answer any questions, uh, anytime during the process.
Stephen, before I forget, next year is your three-year anniversary.
Uh, next week.
Next week, sorry, that's why we said next week is your three-year anniversary.
Yeah, next, uh, Thursday.
Happy anniversary, man. All right, Bobby.
Very good, thank you.
Little known fact about Mr. Fitzjohn is that he doubles as a doppelganger for Mayor Wagner. Bobby, I am so sorry, Bobby. When was that, two weeks ago? Bobby, I, I feel bad because I couldn't see his face the way he said, Mayor Wagner's here, I looked, I said, where's your jacket? And then I looked around, I think I looked around Greg's head and I said, oh crap, that's Bobby. I'm sorry, Bobby.
In the City of High Point, it's not that bad to do this right now.
All right, um, well, good afternoon, everybody, uh, Mayor Jefferson, hello, for the first time as mayor, hi, it's nice to be here addressing you, uh, new members of the city council, it's nice to meet you all, uh, I'm Bobby Fitzjohn, the city finance director. Um, in general, uh, you know, finance and budget are sometimes confused or, um, kind of seen as the same thing, they're very different, uh, budget tends to be more on the management side, more the forward-looking, finance, it's, you know, what happened, how are things going currently? Uh, but there's a, a large area where they overlap, and so Steve and I work closely together, um, his staff and my staff work closely on, on, um, big projects, so I'm not going to touch on some of the budget-related things we do, but I did want to give you an overview of the city's, uh, finance, um, area. Oh, sorry, so just more about myself, um, everybody else did it. Uh, I've been in local government finance for a little while now, uh, five years and a couple of weeks, uh, with the city.
Happy anniversary.
I wanted that, uh, no, we've, uh, I've, I've been here through a lot of change, um, through city leadership and it's been really interesting to see and, uh, I think we've got a great leadership team now, not just with our city manager, but also, um, the department heads that have been brought in and, um, the new council, uh, you know, it's been a great experience. I spent some time in the city of Greensboro prior to this and then the city went to Salem before that, so I'm very familiar with the triad in general and, um, yeah, great place to live and, and, uh, you know, happy to be here. So overall, uh, I want to show you our, uh, divisions that make up the finest department. Um, we have your typical accounting and financial reporting, treasury operations, those are things you might find in any corporate environment. We have a procurement and minority and women-owned business enterprise program, uh, so that's within our purchasing division. We have a risk management division now, we've always held some risk management, um, responsibilities within finance, now we're concentrating that, what was previously decentralized into a centralized, uh, division within finance. We also, uh, assist with capital planning and capital financing citywide, so we work directly with departments, with the city manager's office and the council to explain our debt, our long-term capital, um, financing and, and long-term capital planning needs for the city. Just to kind of give you an overview of what the department looks like, I realize it's kind of small up here, um, our payroll, uh, AP clerks, um, and our, uh, treasury accountant. Under the accounting manager side, we've got a couple of analysts, we've got, um, accountants, and then we have another senior financial analyst that, uh, reports directly to the assistant finance director. Uh, so Heather, who is actually at, um, a conference today, is our assistant finance director, she is, uh, uh, very much over the traditional like finance, accounting, treasury side of things. Then we have a purchasing manager, um, and under them we have a buyer, contracts administrator, NWBE coordinator, Senator Barnes, who some of you have, um, had the opportunity to meet previously, um, and a technician. They also oversee the central warehouse, so some of you may not even know that we have a warehouse, but, um, we do, uh, it's located within, uh, the municipal operations, uh, building, uh, green. Um, our primary customers are the electric utility and the water and sewer utility, but we do that because it's a central warehouse, we have, uh, garbage toads and all kinds of things that, uh, even, um, citizens can come up and, and purchase those or from there that even citizens can come up and purchase those, or from there, if you've ever had to, if you ever had to purchase one and you wanted one immediately, didn't want to wait till the next trash day, you could go there and pick it up. So we serve as a central warehouse for the entire city, there under the purchasing side. And the reason they're kind of housed under purchasing is they do a lot of buying for a lot of these utilities and for other city departments. The risk manager was authorized late last year by the previous council, we're currently underway in the recruitment process for that, so we'll, you know, be able to bring you more information on that as we fill that position and we determine the appropriate resources under that risk manager. Within our accounting and our financial reporting division, you know, it's the, they're the bookkeepers. They ensure that records are kept, every transaction, every dollar coming in, every dollar going out, is kept appropriately, they summarize, analyze the data, they work closely with our budget department on making sure that, you know, spending levels are appropriate halfway through the year on a periodic basis, just to make sure that nobody gets into trouble, we don't want them to get to a point where we have to fix something later on. They also oversee grants, and when I say that, we are a partner in grant management, so the department, community development, public services, they're going to actually manage the grant, we're their partner to make sure that it's being properly reported out to whatever grantee agency is supposed to go to, and that they're in compliance with our statutes and the grant itself. So we are, we act as kind of another set of eyes on grants. We're also, we also oversee the preparation and audit of the annual comprehensive financial report, I didn't bring a copy, it looks a lot like the budget. There's a cover, it's kind of thick, but we put that together every year, we get through the audit. We have had five audits in the last five years have been submitted on time to the LGC, we have an October 31st deadline every year to have that wrapped up and submitted. We also do other reporting as necessary, like I said, we report to grantee agencies, a lot of FTA reporting, a lot of reporting at the state level as necessary, this will be the group that does it. The treasury operations, the most important thing we do is we pay that 160 million dollars that Steve showed you earlier. We are a personnel driven organization, so making payroll every two weeks and ensuring that benefits are paid and everything are by far the most important thing we do in the finance department. We also have a responsibility to pay our vendors in a timely manner, so on that contractual services or that operating expense line you saw, making sure that the various vendors we use, suppliers, are paid in a timely manner as well. We also ensure tax compliance, primarily on the payroll side of things, but sales tax as well, so the city pays sales tax in case you all didn't know that, and then we kindly ask the department of revenue for a refund, weird system, but they want us to pay in first and then get it back, so we ensure that we do that in accurate ways so that we get that sales tax money back into the city. We also handle employee travel citywide within our payroll group, so we're very popular. And then cash management, you may have your Duke energy bill on auto pay, ours is about seven or eight million dollars a month, so we have to make sure that cash is available, that we're not sitting on too much cash, but that it is available for those important payroll runs that I mentioned earlier, and those large payments that go out, debt service is another area where we have to make sure there's strategic cash in place before we'll afford to do. We're also charged with the investment of idle funds. If you've never read GS 159-30, you should, it's light reading. Basically, it says we can only invest in the most boring stuff out there, so we invest in US treasuries, agency debt, only the very highly rated commercial paper and money market. We can also do CDs, I don't think we currently have these CDs, but just for, just for reference, this is the highest interest rate environment I've ever seen from an earnings perspective, and it's exciting. Our money market right now is paying at like 5.5%, which again, if you're thinking equities and you're thinking long term, that's not great, but we invest like your great grandmother would, we're a fixed income investor, right? We want that investment income to help supply, you know, the other resources that we have to distribute. We're not looking at long-term growth like you might if you're investing in equities for retirement one day. And we can't, because GS 159-30. The procurement and NWBE division, so we are a centralized purchasing division, we assist with RFPs, RFQs, bids, citywide, flow through us, it helps to ensure that when you see an item for purchase at a finance committee meeting, at a city council meeting, you can have some assurance that it's gone through the statutory requirements necessary for that contract, whether that is an RFQ, RFP, formal bid, informal bid, we have that central process as a way to ensure compliance citywide. So we maintain a purchasing policy and then make sure that we are applying that to any purchases we make. So yeah, we ensure policy, statutory compliance. We do have an MWBE outreach program, the city council, a little over a year ago, authorized the position of an MWBE coordinator, we hired that position in May of last year, and then went through the process of recommending a disparity study to city council, so now we are in the process of going through that study. It is very early, I think it's an 18-month process, and we had our, like, internal, kind of start to it in the last couple of months, so it's a, it's a long process. It is a citywide effort, so our MWBE coordinator is heading it up, but there is a steering committee made up of some of John's folks and other interested stakeholders throughout the city. So like I said, we're a central purchasing area, but the folks actually making the decisions and reaching out to vendors are often the folks in the department, right? So engineering services and public works are making key decisions on who they award contracts to, and who, how they evaluate these contracts. Also, there's a lot of purchasing that happens at a smaller level, and we want our folks who are buying at even, you know, a few thousand dollars to also be thinking about MWBE and things like that. So there's, it is a citywide effort to, to not only get through this disparity study, but also implement our MWBE outreach program. We also administer our P cards citywide, there's about 350 P cards with about $800,000 in monthly spend, it's a very nice rebate that we get also that helps us to spend that $800,000, but we handle that centrally, we, you know, we do our best to audit statements that we can, we do also require supervisors to review statements and be aware of the charges that their employees are making on those cards. And then I mentioned the central warehouse, it is, you know, essentially located, it's actually accounted for in the electric fund, but we do not do an upcharge for items that we purchase and then distribute to the central warehouse or from the central warehouse, it's all done at cost, but it's a service that we provide because the electric operators already need a warehouse, so we're able to kind of utilize that efficiency and provide that service citywide. Risk management, like I said, this is a new standalone division, but I'll talk about some of the things that we currently are doing in a decentralized manner. We oversee claim management through third-party adjusters for general risk and workers' compensation claims. We do risk transfer by purchasing insurance policies in certain areas where it makes sense, there are certain areas where we have chosen to be self-insured because the cost of the premium is significant enough that we're willing to be self-insured in those areas. We also assist departments in cost recovery or subrogation, so so many damages to the property, we want to help them get that back so they can replace the item and make the city whole. Employee safety and ADA compliance will be something that's featured in the new division once we've kind of set all that up, that's currently being fulfilled in other areas of the city. And I mentioned on capital planning, capital financing, this may, you know, have, this may be related to some questions we were just addressing earlier, so we advise the management, council on funding capital projects, what's the best way to fund this thing that we need, whether it's a water and sewer infrastructure project, you know, we have a robust revenue bond project, that makes, or a revenue bond program, that makes sense to, you know, use revenue bonds to fund that infrastructure. In a case like stormwater, where we don't have a revenue bond program, what, how, what's the best way to fund that improvement that we don't want to wait and save up cash, charge higher fees perhaps, and save up cash to pay for? So we'll come in and we'll advise management, we'll work with our financial advisors and our bond attorneys to come up with the best financial strategy for those projects. We do long and short range planning for debt service, I need to make sure that in the next year we have debt service budgeted, but I also need to make sure that we're not going to put a strain in future years that is not planned well in advance for us to make debt service payments. We also, if the interest rate environment is right, we bring debt refundings occasionally, that will allow us to issue new debt at a lower rate, just like if you were to refinance a mortgage, and then we apply those savings back into the program, whether that's reducing or not requiring as high of a water and sewer rate increase, or, or not requiring additional resources to pay for general fund, funded debt. Little history of our ratings, we've been a AAA at S and P since 2008, those are our current ratings, they're either, for the GO, it's either the second highest or the highest rating, on the revenue bonds, it's Moody's doesn't like us quite as much, we're like the third highest. Honestly, anything in that level, you're talking about very minimal difference in what type of interest rate you would see in the, in the market when you issue debt, and the barriers to get to that next level would potentially put a burden on us or our rate payers if we were to decide we are going to be AAA, it's, it would be a significant burden that you wouldn't necessarily see the payoff on. So we are very highly rated debt, back to the question earlier about, you know, is our debt sustainable, or if we run into issues, that is all kind of fleshed out in the feasibility study that we would do for new debt, where, and again, the LGC would also make sure that we're at a good financial position, that if something were to come up, we're not going to default.
Bobby, can we pause it just for a second? General obligation and revenue bonds, can you just, for a second, quick overview of the difference between those two things, just really quick? If you can give the high level, very fun version of it.
So revenue bonds, revenue bonds are funded when you have a dedicated revenue source, so your water and sewer revenues, the very first thing we have to pay is our current operating expenses, and then everything left over after that, we have pledged to pay debt service on revenue bonds. And because we're able to show a certain amount of coverage, which is that net income above the debt service payments, we're able to maintain those high ratings. So again, revenue bonds, there's a specific revenue in place. GO debt, as some of you might have learned recently in some of your school of government courses, or you will over your time in council, you are pledging the full faith and credit of the government, you are saying we will raise taxes if we have to in order to pay that debt. So they're, they are the highest in general rated debt, if you've never had any major financial hiccups in the past, you're going to be rated pretty high. So it's, it's the strongest credit that we have. They are usually driven by voter referendum, which I believe this council...
Back in 2018.
Same time, yeah.
Yeah, back in 2018, it was the projects for Triangle Lake or the Adult Day Center, not the adult center, Housing Authority had the day booked to review, but Burton Road was out there.
Yeah, and so those are, so in general, you have to go through a referendum process, however, North Carolina law allows something called a two-thirds bond, so if we retire $15 million in principal, the next year we can issue two-thirds of that or $10 million in new GO debt. So it's, it's a little different, it allows to be non-voted debt, that still gives us that excellent market rate when we go to issue. The other type of debt that's not listed here, that is typically rated somewhere in between revenue bonds and GO debt, are limited obligation bonds, that's how we funded the police department, that's renovation, if you haven't been out there, it's a great building, that's how we funded the stadium, they're called limited obligation bonds because the obligation is limited to the, whatever you're pledging to secure that debt. In the case of the stadium, we pledged the stadium, in case of the police department, we pledged the police department as collateral, very similar to a mortgage. And the rate you receive is really based on your history of paying debt service payments, just like when you go get a mortgage, it's going to look at your, your credit history over time. But those are the three main types of debt, we also do a good amount of leases, smaller things, that might come up the finance committee every once in a while.
Thank you for that.
Really quick, just wanted to highlight some achievements of the finance department, we do receive the certificate of achievement for excellence in reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association every year, that's what, the same organization that awards the budget award. We also receive the sustained professional purchasing award from the North Carolina Government Fin, or Government Purchasing Association. Our staff participates in national and state professional organizations, we are very involved in the Government Finance Officers Association of North Carolina, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada on a national level, I guess international, and also the North Carolina Government Purchasing Association. We have five, or we have two CPAs, we have five certified local government finance officers with the North Carolina Government Finance Officers Association, and we have two local government purchasing officers with the North Carolina Association of Government Purchasing. I'm usually doing acronyms, I usually don't say all those, so I apologize, but anyway, we just wanted to highlight, we are very credentialed, we have a fantastic staff that knows what they're doing, we emphasize training and continuing education year round, and we have to, because these standards are constantly changing, I feel like Councilman Moore is here now, he has heard me come up and say, hey, new mandate that we have to, you know, treat this differently, and so we have to stay on top of that, we have to stay involved, we have to be able to explain it to management and council, these new changes, so it requires a certain amount of continued work, and our staff has put a lot of time into that, so very proud of them. And that's all I have, I feel like we answered a lot of questions, but if you all have any additional, you know, please let me know, Steve's still in the room, he did run away, if you all have any...
Any other questions from council?
Mayor Jefferson and members of the council, one other item that I wanted to note is, you know, both of these gentlemen have talked about kind of the level of detail and analysis that goes into preparing of the budget documents and also in our annual financial report, and the information I share with you about the city's debt, we have our financial advisor, which is Davenport, that worked with our staff to help us with these financial projections that we provide to you. We're also in the process of working with Will Dan, they're looking at our electric fund, when we did our asset sale last year, we wanted to make sure that before we start looking at how we may allocate some of those funds that were associated with the assets so that we can take a long-term approach of looking at our electric fund, understanding what capital outlay might be required of us in the future, how does that impact our rates? So that study is currently underway, so we hope to be able to have that report back early spring, probably April timeframe, and then we'll also start giving you all some, some more in-depth information so that you all can plan long-term thinking about the electric fund and how those, those resources might be used, so that we're anticipating some uncertainties that might come if we're asked to contribute to some of the upkeep of the nuclear reactor there at Kataba, that we're preparing for those things in advance. So we, I just wanted you all to know that we're, we've started that study as well in addition to what we do at Davenport, and we'll be sharing that with you all in the future.
Thank you for that. Any questions from council? Quick, quick point to note, you mentioned this disparity study expected to end in either Q2 or Q3, according to year 2025, it's not like you said, Bobby.
That sounds about right.
Yeah, all right. I anticipate in fiscal year 25, 26, that'll probably be where we get some of those recommendations back from that, from that report, which will be an opportunity for us to figure out what do we do there, so.
And I will say that you're going to start seeing more public engagement around that because a big part is engaging with both community and business owners in the area, and that is scheduled to ramp up, I think, towards the end of this month, and so we have some internal discussions to have, but then also public engagement will start up.
Thank you. All right, well, we appreciate staff being with us here for the department overviews. Our next agenda item actually has us go into closed session for attorney-client privilege. Is there a motion for us to go in closed session?
Yes.
Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Mayor Tim Holmes, is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor with a 65, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, that motion passes, and once the lights go red, we will officially be in closed session. Hey, thank you all so much again, and happy anniversaries.